Good evening. Today is Thursday, January 11th, 2023, and the time is 6:30 PM. I will now call the regular meeting of the ISD 191 Board of Education to order. Welcome to those of you who are in the audience this evening and to anyone who may be watching from home. Director Chester, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All right. Do I have a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Director Werbe.
Second.
Seconded by Director Chester. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The next order of business is the annual organization of the Board of Education. There are thirteen items to this section of the agenda, and we'll start by filling the four board officer positions. Nominations do not require a second. The Board Chair will ask for nominations three times before closing the nominations, and Board members will need to vote only if there is more than one nomination for the position. First up is the Board Chair. Chair presides at all school board meetings and works with the superintendent on calling board meetings and establishing meeting agendas. At times, the Chair is called upon to serve in a ceremonial capacity as the ranking elected representative of the school district. The Chair countersigns all checks drawn by the Treasurer. Are there any nominations for the Office of Board Chair?
I would like to nominate Eric Miller for Board Chair.
Eric Miller has been nominated for Chair. Are there any other nominations for the Office of Chair? Are there any other nominations for the Office of Chair? If there are no further nominations, nominations for the Office of Board Chair are now closed, and Director Miller, being the only candidate nominated for the Office of Chair, I hereby declare you as the Chair by acclamation, and I'll direct the clerk to record it in the minutes. And that is it. I will now turn the meeting over to Chair Miller.
Okay. He took the whole block.
Me either.
Okay. Thank you. Great.
Just think it's on. I pushed to turn it off.
It's on all the time.
Yeah.
That one is.
Okay. Well, thank you, everybody, and special thanks to Director Hume for his leadership and service to our community and as Board Chair of 2023. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I appreciate the giving the opportunity to serve in this role. I appreciate the nomination. Thank you very much. Outside of the punctuality role of running these meetings, I feel that the principal job of this role is to be the collective voice of this Chair or of this Board, and I promise to endeavor to do the best that I can. So, thank you. All right. We will now turn to the election of the Vice Chair. The School Board created the Vice Chair position in 1989 for the purpose of easing the workload of the Chair. The Vice Chair serves as Chair when the Chair is absent, assists with board operations, and plans the annual evaluation of the superintendent. Are there any nominations for the Office of Vice Chair? And I am going to nominate Director Anna Werbe. Are there any other nominations for Vice Chair? Once again, are there any other nominations for the Vice Chair position? Therefore, nominations for Vice Chair are now closed. Director Werbe is the only candidate nominated for the Office of Vice Chair, and I hereby declare Director Werbe elected Vice Chair by acclamation. Congratulations.
Thank you.
We will now move to the election of Clerk. The Clerk presides at board meetings in the absence of the Chair and Vice Chair, and from a legal standpoint, is responsible for board minutes, signing board-approved contracts, and calling school board elections. The Clerk also countersigns all district checks. The routine duties of the Clerk are performed by the Superintendent's Office and Business Office. Are there any nominations for Office of Clerk?
Yes, I would like to nominate Director Abigail Alt for Clerk.
Director Alt has been nominated for Clerk. Are there any other nominations for Clerk? And lastly, are there any other nominations for the Clerk position? Nominations for Clerk are now closed. Director Alt is the only candidate nominated for Office of Clerk, and I hereby declare Director Alt elected Clerk by acclamation. Congratulations.
Congrats.
Next, we will move to the election of Treasurer. The Treasurer is legally responsible for the deposit and withdrawal of all district funds and reporting some of the school and reporting same to the School Board. Checks drawn on school district accounts are signed by the Treasurer. The routine duties of the Treasurer are performed by the Business Office. Are there any nominations for the Office of Treasurer?
Yes, I would like to nominate Tony Carter Connor for Treasurer.
Director Connor has been nominated for Treasurer. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Nominations for Treasurer are now closed. Director Connor is the only candidate nominated for the Office of Treasurer, and I hereby declare Director Connor elected Treasurer by acclamation. Congratulations, Director Connor.
Congratulations.
The next agenda item is the salaries of Board members. Salaries of School Board members are set annually. In January of 2016, the salaries were set at $550 per month for each Director, plus an additional monthly stipend of $50 for the Chair in recognition of increased duties and expenses associated with that position. On March 14, 2019, the salaries were reduced by $100 per month beginning July 1, 2019. The recommendation in front of us is that salaries of Board members be set at $450 per month and that the Chairperson receives an additional $50 per month. Do I have a motion for the recommendation as stated?
So moved.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been moved by Director Hume and seconded by Director Alt. Is there any discussion on the matter? We'll take a vote at this point, then. Does all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Say nay. The motion carries unanimously. Now, we will move to regular meetings of the School Board. Regular meetings of the School Board are typically held on the second and fourth Thursday of each month. However, board meetings may be scheduled during each week to accommodate scheduling needs. Regular School Board meetings will be held at Diamond Head Education Center, 200 West Burnsville Parkway, Burnsville. Recommendation in front of us is that all regular meetings of the Independent School District 191 Board of Education commence at 6:30 PM on the dates noted below, with meetings conducted at the Diamond Head Education Center and cablecast. Board listening sessions will be scheduled from 5:45 to 6:15 PM before regular board meetings. Director Alt, do you remember, do we list all the board meetings out?
Don't read them out.
I don't. What's that?
They did the last couple.
Okay, I will. That's fine. I was contemplating doing it, so just give me one second to pull it up. I can read through them very quick. Oh, you have it? Oh, perfect. Thank you. All right. I will read through the scheduled meetings for the record. January 11th, 2024, January 25th, 2024, February 8th, 2024, going forward, these are, unless otherwise stated, they're all 2024. February 22nd, March 14th, March 28th, April 18th, April 25th, May 9th, May 23rd, June 13th, June 20th, August 8th, August 22nd, September 12th, September 26th, October 10th, October 24th, November 7th, November 21st, December 12th. And we have the 25th. Okay, yeah.
Twenty-five.
Yes. I don't think we need to list those, though. All right. Do I have a motion then in front of us, or a motion for the recommendation for setting the dates for 2024 in front, as stated in front of us?
Second.
Okay. Motion has been moved by Director Chester and seconded by Director Werbe. Is there any discussion on the matter? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Say nay. The motion carries unanimously. Now, we will move to regular meetings of the School Board. Regular meetings of the School Board are typically held on the second and fourth Thursday of each month. However, board meetings may be scheduled during each week to accommodate scheduling needs. Regular School Board meetings will be held at Diamond Head Education Center, 200 West Burnsville Parkway, Burnsville. Recommendation in front of us is that all regular meetings of the Independent School District 191 Board of Education commence at 6:30 PM on the dates noted below, with meetings conducted at the Diamond Head Education Center and cablecast. Board listening sessions will be scheduled from 5:45 to 6:15 PM before regular board meetings. Director Alt, do you remember, do we list all the board meetings out?
Don't read them out.
I don't. What's that?
They did the last couple.
Okay, I will. That's fine. I was contemplating doing it, so just give me one second to pull it up. I can read through them very quick. Oh, you have it? Oh, perfect. Thank you. All right. I will read through the scheduled meetings for the record. January 11th, 2024, January 25th, 2024, February 8th, 2024, going forward, these are, unless otherwise stated, they're all 2024. February 22nd, March 14th, March 28th, April 18th, April 25th, May 9th, May 23rd, June 13th, June 20th, August 8th, August 22nd, September 12th, September 26th, October 10th, October 24th, November 7th, November 21st, December 12th. And we have the 25th. Okay, yeah.
Twenty-five.
Yes. I don't think we need to list those, though. All right. Do I have a motion then in front of us, or a motion for the recommendation for setting the dates for 2024 in front, as stated in front of us?
Second.
Okay. Motion has been moved by Director Chester and seconded by Director Werbe. Is there any discussion on the matter? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Say nay. The motion carries unanimously. We will now move to, that concludes the annual organization of the board meeting section of our meeting tonight, and we will now move to our information portion of our meeting. First reports we will be hearing tonight will be from Dr. Chris Belmont, Jesus Sandoval, and Sarah Noble, who will be presenting information about changes to the secondary course catalog. And I will just clarify, we are hearing from Dr. Belmont, Assistant Superintendent, Jesus Sandoval, Principal of Burnsville High School, and Sarah Noble, Associate Principal at Burnsville High School. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Miller, Superintendent Battle, and members of the Board. I'm here with Associate Principal Noble and Principal Sandoval to present the secondary course catalog for 2024-2025.
All right. Well, thank you for having us tonight. We are presenting in a similar format as we have the last couple of years, hopefully making it a little easier to read through our lengthy catalog. You have, you had received a document earlier that had additions, deletions, and changes in it, and I'll just speak briefly to each section and then open that up. So additions to next year's, to the course catalog have a bulk of it being about our Associate of Arts program and some very required courses and some allowing for student choice within that program. So we're excited to be able to start looking towards the student choice aspect in our Associate of Arts. There's also still some pieces from last year's Career and Tech Ed curriculum review that are showing up now, and that was part of discussions that the teams had had previously. So you'll see those in additions. Deletions are both really in that Career and Tech Ed department and things that we had previously discussed, and either already replaced with something or have a very similar version offered now, so it was redundant to continue some of that. In our changes section, some of it is very simple prerequisite updates, so they're just, they're small pieces. We also looked through our music offering, our band in particular, and took out the wording of freshman band, so we've taken that out of play, and then changed it to black and gold band, so that is a change for prerequisites and also allowing for more options within our music program. So, and then you can continue to see some subtle changes to names, to pieces, and descriptions that departments submitted. So that is our, the changes, deletions, and additions for the course catalog.
Thank you, Ms. Noble, and as you, I'm sure most of you are aware, this impacts primarily right now our current eighth, ninth, 10th, and 11th grade students. And that's all we've got. Back to you, Chair, for questions or comments.
Yeah. Does anybody have any questions about the secondary course catalog? Okay. Thank you. No? Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you for your time, and thank you for the, I'm sure, large amount of work that goes into that.
Thank you very much.
All right. That means we now are going to move to the Student Representative Report section of our meeting tonight. Cody Hume, welcome, Cody.
Thank you for having me. So, starting off strong, we're talking about Burnsville Strong, they'll be doing a dog therapy event on January 17th, next Wednesday. Over 200 students signed up to attend.
Did you mic on?
Yes. Yeah. Okay.
Go ahead, it's not.
Sorry about that. Again, Burnsville Strong will be doing a dog therapy event on January 17th, which is next Wednesday, where 200 students signed up to see some fun dogs for finals, for the final schedule comes into play, so students will be able to, you know, get to spend some time with some dogs throughout the morning, and then put that to over 20 students in Burnsville Strong volunteer to help out to run and coordinate the event, which is really exciting. Going to you can go a little bit more, 21 students attended this year's conference, and of those 21 students, five of those are graduating seniors, including myself, who are able to receive graduation cords that they can wear at the graduation ceremony in June. And then also, DECA had their district competition on Friday, January 5th, where students were able to basically showcase their business proposals, and of those six, of those students who attended the district competition, 16 qualified for states and will be attending the competition during the first week of March. Going to the athletics a little bit, weightlifting had 12 students participate on their January 6 meet, and then a third of those students also placed medals out of the 150 people total at the meet, and three of those students are state qualifiers, as I heard from one of the students. And then on top of that, too, as I mentioned earlier, finals week is approaching at Burnsville High School, so on January 18th and 19th, there will be a unique schedule for students to enter in classes and essentially take their finals as we end off the season at Burnsville Strong, and each class is about an hour and 90 minutes long, but the first hour being only 45 minutes per day. All that's occurring at Burnsville.
Excellent. Thank you, Cody. Now, we will move to the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Teresa Battle, Superintendent.
Thank you, Chair Miller, and members of the Board. Tonight, I wanted to share an update on an opportunity for staff that's new in our district this year, and I think it's very much in keeping with our identity as a pathways district. As much as we're about removing barriers and providing tools and skills to students, so students can find and pursue their pathways, we also want to do that for our staff. We received a $600,000 grant this year that is being used to help current staff earn their teaching licenses. Each participant, and there are currently 13 staff who have joined the program, can receive up to $8,500 per year for four years to cover tuition or any other needs associated with the degree program. Specifically, the grant supports staff members who are Black, Indigenous, and other people of color, so it's also helping to grow the diversity of our teaching staff, so it more closely matches our student population. This is a benefit for all students. This year's cohort includes staff members who are currently working as administrative assistants, educational assistants, cultural liaisons, and community education coordinators. Their degree interests include early childhood, secondary-level English, special education, multilingual education, and more. And we are already looking to expand, as we've applied for another grant of nearly $4,000. This request was based on interviews of these candidates who, and they identified additional barriers, and so we are asking Minnesota Department of Education for additional funding to help them overcome these barriers. I specifically want to thank our Director of Strategic Partnerships and Pathways, Kathy Funston, for her work to secure the grant, and also Courtney Floback, who is overseeing the program, helping to recruit and support all of our participants on their journey. This program will certainly benefit District 191 and our students, as I shared, to expand the diversity of numbers of teachers in our community. I am very proud and excited that we're helping staff find and follow their pathways. Thank you, and that concludes my report.
Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Battle. Okay. Now, we will move to Board Member Reports. Say, just a reminder again, this is the cycle of Board Member Reports outside of the regular assigned committee roles. So does anybody, any Board Member have information to bring forward tonight for Board Member Reports? Oops. Seeing none. That will conclude the Board Member Reports section of the agenda this evening. We will move now out of information to the business meeting, beginning with our consent agenda. Although board action is required, it is generally unnecessary to hold discussion on these items. In the event a board member wishes to discuss an item, that item will be moved for separate consideration. At this time, do any board members wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Okay. Seeing none, is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Director Alt.
Second.
Seconded by Director Sophia, Sophia, sorry. And so, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Say nay. And the motion carries unanimously. Okay. So now, we're going to move to the first new business item of the evening, and that is approval of the Food Services Negotiated Agreements. Presenting will be Stacy Solvin, Executive Director of Administrative Services. Welcome, Stacy.
Thank you, Chair Miller, Dr. Battle, members of the Board, bringing to you tonight a recommendation to adopt and approve the proposed revisions to the 2023-2025 Collective Bargaining Agreement with the Burnsville Food Service Association. Some of the highlights with this language, we met three times, beginning on October 9th, 2023, and finishing up on November 15th. We updated language to reflect the changes in PELRA. Also, state statute language, we updated for e-learning days for non-certified staff, as well as introducing emergency sick and safety leave language to the contract language. We also are working really hard at aligning our bereavement language across all of the units for all employees. We believe it's important that all employees are treated the same when it comes to experiencing this type of hardship in their life, so we are working hard at trying to uniform the language across all units, and so far, those that we have settled with easily and readily adopted the language that we proposed. One of the big items with our food service associates, this is one of our hardest-to-fill positions, so we did, in addition, make some market adjustments to try to help fill these positions. We got a little bit creative also. Associates, the food service associates are those folks who are anywhere between three and a half hours to, sometimes, I think we have one or two that are at seven and a half hours. Moved them from 24 periods down to 19. So they're not receiving insurance benefits because of the number of hours, the majority of them. So, and when you're only working three and a half hours a day, to have that paycheck spread over 24 pay periods really diminishes your take-home pay very quickly. So we felt that it was, we condensed that into 19 pay periods. Those folks would be eligible unless they found other work here within the district also to apply for unemployment over the summer term. So it should help as far as the take-home pay for that, those folks. The other side of that is, with our assistant managers and our managers, we moved to full year positions, up to 221 days. This will allow us to cover our summer school programming. It'll allow us to cover 917 programming when we're not in session, and it'll also allow us to cover early learning programming when the K-12 folks are out. So we still provide meals for students during those times. So now, we'll have flexibility with additional hours to where the assistant managers and managers can cover that for the full year. Okay? With that, the total package for two years is $216,000, just a little over, and the total increase is 11.25% with salary and benefit increases. Just to note, this amount does not reflect moving to full year. Okay? That's a choice on our part because we're wanting, we pay for summer school hours already, or we would pay for unemployment, so we didn't cost that against them, just the increase into the salary. Okay? With that, it is my recommendation that the Board of Education approve the proposed revisions and re-adopt the unchanged language in the 2023-2025 Collective Bargaining Agreement with the Burnsville Food Service Association and Independent School District 191.
Thank you. Is there a motion for the recommendation in front of us?
So moved.
Moved by Director Hume.
Second.
Seconded by Director Connor. Is there any discussion on the matter? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Say nay. The motion carries unanimously. All right. The next item on our agenda tonight is to approve an application for preliminary approval of an extended robotics team field trip on April 15th through the 21st, 2024, to Houston, Texas. Speaking on the matter will be Dr. Chris Belmont, Assistant Superintendent, Bill Heim, Associate Principal and Activities Director, Crystal Quinn, robotics coach, Sean Leonard, previous head coach and parent, Krista Who's, parent. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, Chair Miller, and hello again, members of the Board. Mr. Leonard could not be here this evening, but we do have three key supports for our Burnsville High School robotics team, who have come for preliminary approval of a potential field trip to Houston, Texas, that could entail missing in excess of, or excess of three school days. So I'm just kind of see who wants to take the microphone first. Is that Mr. Heim?
Yeah, thank you for having us here. You know the successes of our robotics team from our conversations last spring, highly decorated, highly acclaimed group. Last year, finished first in the state and fifth in the world. Okay? So my job is to help them get their trips going and to really just stay out of their way, because they do really good work. So I will have Crystal here go ahead and explain this kind of the, I guess, the two trips they've already gone on and how that might lead to the trip to Houston.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you for the introduction, Dr. Belmont and Bill. So I'm here today to talk about the world championship and to get approval for the team to travel to Houston for that, for that trip in April. Basically, it's a, like a preliminary approval, right? We haven't qualified yet, but the two tournaments that Bill had mentioned that happened in mid-March and early April could qualify us for this tournament. The team competed last year and did amazing. I mean, fifth in the world, that's insane. They also, in addition to the awesome robot performance, they did take home an imagery award, which was for their visual presentation of their team and their robot. So in the packet I submitted on the front page, you saw they were in the blaze suits, the robots all decked out in flames with LEDs and things like that, so they really carry Burnsville High School and blaze with them when they go and compete, and they were definitely recognized for it. Everyone knew who we were down in Houston, so it was awesome. I even got pictures of, I have a friend from, you know, some other suburb in Minnesota, and she's like, you know, I was talking to-
Burnsville High School robotics team, who have come for preliminary approval of a potential field trip to Houston, Texas, that could entail missing in excess of, or excess of three school days. So just kind of see who wants to take the microphone first. Is that Mr. Heim?
Yeah, thank you for having us here. You know the successes of our robotics team from our conversations last spring. Highly decorated, highly acclaimed group. Last year finished first in the state and fifth in the world. Okay? So my job is to help them get their trips going and to really just stay out of their way, because they do really good work. So I will have Crystal here go ahead and explain this kind of the, I guess, the two trips they've already gone on and how that might lead to the trip to Houston.
Okay, awesome. Thank you for the introduction, Dr. Belmont and Bill. So I'm here today to talk about the world championship and get approval for the team to travel to Houston for that, for that trip in April. Basically, it's like a preliminary approval, right? We haven't qualified yet, but the two tournaments that Bill had mentioned that happened in mid-March and early April could qualify us for this tournament. The team competed last year and did amazing. I mean, fifth in the world, that's insane. They also, in addition to the awesome robot performance, they did take home an imagery award, which was for their visual presentation of their team and their robot. So in the packet I submitted on the front page, you saw they were in the blaze suits, the robots all decked out in flames with LEDs and things like that. So they really carry Burnsville High School and blaze with them when they go and compete, and they were definitely recognized for it. Everyone knew who we were down in Houston, so it was awesome. I even got pictures of, I have a friend from, you know, some other suburb in Minnesota, and she's like, you know, I was talking to one of these kids, and they were super nice, they're in these flame suits, and I was like, oh, where are you guys from? And then realized they're your team, and that's awesome, and they met down in Houston. So, so very, very awesome. So the world championships is not only an awesome place for the team to showcase their successes, but it's a great learning opportunity for the kids. You get a really good opportunity to talk with other teams. There are teams that go almost every year, kind of these legacy teams that have been around, and so I always encourage the students to go talk to other students. You can see how their programs are run, what things they're learning, maybe tools and things that they get to use to build their robots that we should try to bring here to Burnsville. And so not only is it a great competitive environment, but it's a really awesome collaborative environment where the teams are really working together to build an awesome STEM community where we can all get better and learn more. So it's an amazing opportunity for the kids to go to this tournament. So, yeah, phenomenal showing, I guess, to go into the trip details. It is a, I think I have, yep. So the plan for this trip is that it's going to be five days of travel for the kids. So on Monday is a travel day on April 15th. Tuesday is a day that I built in because I, there's been horror stories. Luckily, it hasn't impacted us, but there are teams that have traveled and the robots, things happen in transit. So having that extra day in there for us to fix the robot, unwind from travel before we go into a very important competition, I think is very valuable. The other part of that is, we did this last year, it was a great success, so I'd love to do it again. There's an alumni from Burnsville, Jenna Furcht. She actually works at NASA now, and so through her, who's a great friend of mine, she's able to get us some very cool VIP tours of the Kennedy Space Center. And so last year, the kids were able to do that, or Johnson Space Center, sorry. And she was able to do that last year, and so it's a cool experience to see someone who graduated from this high school, what they're doing, and also just who doesn't want to go see the kind of behind the scenes of NASA? So the plan is for us to do that again on Tuesday, and then Wednesday, our tournament start. And so we load in Wednesday afternoon, and then Thursday, Friday, Saturday is competition, and that's 7:00 AM to about 5:00 or 6:00 PM for those three days, and then Sunday is our day to travel back here. So for general costs, so I laid out on the table, the overall cost that I estimate for each student is about $1,150, but that's typically not what the students end up paying. So the team in the past several years has done an amazing job with sponsorships, GoFundMes, fundraisers, things like that. We're constantly not only trying to make the trip more affordable, but also find opportunities to make sure that our booster club has the funds to cover these trips for these students. So in the past couple of years, the students haven't had to pay anything other than meals and souvenirs for these trips that we go on. So they do an amazing job, and we do fundraise all year for this to make sure that we can make that happen. So we will continue to constantly try to drive that cost down, and we do also make sure with our booster club that there are funds set aside. So if, if the cost is ever an issue, as long as the student brings it up to me, lets me know, we can have the discussion, and there are ways for us to take care of that. So, yeah, and so those are the logistics of the trip. But I also have with me here Krista, who's a parent of several students that have gone through this program, so I just wanted her to speak about the impact of these trips to these students.
Yeah, the, my son, especially last year, who got to go to Nationals, it's, it's like nothing else. I mean, these kids are playing on a huge stage, a national stage, and these are the, these are our future leaders. So it's really worth our, all of our resources to back these kids. You know, they're definitely, we're going to be working for them someday, for sure. Or they'll be designing something that we all just can't live without anymore, so. Yeah, I just can't say enough, my kid eats, sleeps, breathes robotics. He's, he just absolutely loves it. So, yeah, we really appreciate all of your support, and it's really important that we get the approval upfront, because when we get that, when we qualify for the champions, championship, it is like, go, 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 go. We had to raise $20,000 in a very short amount of time last year and get all of these things together in a very short amount of time, which is very stressful, and in an already super busy season. It's way better if we can have all of these, our ducks in a row ahead of time, so that sometimes we can sleep. She can sleep.
That is a good point that she makes. Our two tournaments, if we qualify at our latest tournament, that gives us two weeks to get our ducks in a row before we have to travel.
It's not enough time. I will say too, that because, because the teachers do such a great job of putting everything online, the students are, they, believe it or not, are able to keep up with their schoolwork pretty well, even though they are competing and doing all the things. But I know my son was able to maintain his 4.0 average while, at, all the year last year, while they were traveling and got all the homework done and everything like that. So we really appreciate all of the technology that's available to the, to our students that makes going to these events possible and allows them to have this balance, this, you know, work-life balance, if you will, when they're only 14, 15, 16 years old. And it's, that's, those are really important life skills too, so thank you for that.
Very grateful for our presenters. Back to you for questions or comments.
Well, just, before we get to that, we'll just read the recommendation. Recommendation is to approve an application for preliminary approval of an extended field trip to Houston, Texas, April 15th through 21st, 2024, for robotics to compete and qualify for higher levels of competition, develop engineering skills, develop time management and presentation skills, learn to handle both victory and defeat, develop self-confidence through hard work and dedication, come together as a team, and have fun. So do I have any nominations for the recommendation in front of me?
So moved.
Moved Director Alt.
Second.
Seconded by Director Werbe. Now, is there any commentary or discussion on the Board? Yes, Director Alt, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Miller. Yeah, I might. Is that working? That one's, no. Maybe it's me. It doesn't like, okay. Okay, I think that one's working. Thank you all, appreciate the information. And as I was going through the materials before tonight, I just, I really appreciated the proactive planning. That really, that really goes a long way in terms of showing how you're thinking, not just about, you know, the competition, you're thinking about the kids, and, okay, how are we going to get from point A to point B? And the time, oh my goodness, two weeks, that's not a lot of time to plan and quite a bit of money to raise, so thank you for that. There was a lot of thoughtfulness in the fundraising for the students, and you guys know that we're always asking about, okay, how are we making sure that, that our students are able to attend regardless of their ability to pay? And it was very clear that, you know, you've got that covered, and to the point where, you know, I appreciated hearing that, you know, students might only have to pay for incidentals. Having skin in the game is always important, and at the same time, you know, they're going to compete. And then lastly, any Board Member, if you guys haven't seen robotics compete, it's awesome. I mean, it's just, it's quite the competition, and I remember the first time that I saw a robotics competition, it was like nothing else that I've ever seen. I mean, Scott, you've seen them too, but it's just, it's incredible what our kids are able to do with the technology and, and what the advisors are able to instill in our students, and, you know, kind of encouraging them to, to connect. And the competition itself, it's a community, you know? Like, we have our community at the high school, and the robotics teams are within a community themselves, which is so supportive and wonderful. So thank you and good luck. Hopefully, we will be approving something that will be needed, and I'm sure, you know, knowing the team's past, we're in good shape, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, Director Alt. I was just going to add to your comment that I learned more about the robotics team as an elementary principal because they're so good at getting to our STEM nights and growing our own in that sense too, so it is remarkable and fun to watch.
Yeah, they certainly do a really good job of making nerd cool and fun. It's like a major event.
Any other comments or questions? Yes, Director Connor, go ahead.
Yes, first of all, I'd just like to say, this is such an amazing opportunity. I'm so proud of you guys for your achievements you've already made, so full support from me, of course. Also, I just really liked the presentation, your itemized agenda of everything. This is really, great job on that. But I do have a question, how many, about how many teachers and students go to this?
From our team?
Total, or from the team? How big is your team?
Yeah, so this year, we're still kind of ramping up for the season. The game was just released last week. We were here on Saturday watching the game release, and now the kids are actually at the high school with a bunch of our mentors working on the robot. So we have about 10 students this year, give or take, so it'll probably grow. Usually, we get a couple of students once all the excitement starts, so. And then as far as mentors, we have anywhere between three to five adults with the team at any time, so.
Which is very small compared to a lot of teams.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
Our team is very, very small compared to a lot of teams, so. And our funding is much lower than a lot of other teams, so the fact that we were able to achieve this with such small numbers in all areas is, I just feel like it's a huge underdog story. It was super awesome.
It is amazing. It's amazing. And then my last comment is, is this televised anywhere? Because I don't know anything about it. I've seen a little demonstration when I toured the high school, but, I mean, the way they make it sound, I would really like to see more. Is it on YouTube or something?
Yeah, so you can find, their, the tournaments are typically livestreamed. You can find clips on YouTube, teams will post them. I believe it's still on Netflix, actually did a documentary about the whole program that was there, and that got a lot of people invested, which is, which is very cool. So if you look up first robotics competition, you'll find a lot of information.
Thank you for that.
We can try to make sure too that the Board gets, I mean, if you want links, there's no shortage of people who are technologically savvy.
Links are always nice, but I can look it up too. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Okay. Again, thank you for coming this evening, thank you for an excellent presentation. What you guys are doing is fantastic. I do want to especially acknowledge, as Director Alt did, your application tonight was spot on in what we'd like to see here, especially around the fact that you have thought out equitable financing for the, for the event. We want to ensure that any and all of our students that go on, want to go on one of these events have the ability, if they're willing to put a little work into it or whatever. So appreciate that very much, thank you. At this time, we will take a vote on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any not in favor, say nay. Hearing none, this motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And good lucks.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Yeah, I want, we look forward to having you back when you come to tell us about being first in the world, so, all right? Thank you.
That was great. I look forward to it. Yes. I'm a fiery. Hey, even top 20 is great in the world.
Okay, this concludes our regular scheduled work session. Oops, sorry, this concludes our new business session, and next on the agenda is a work session to discuss the draft of the 2024 legislative platform. I move that we take a brief recess and return to this agenda item, we'll say, at 7:20. Is that, I think that should be sufficient. Is there a second on that as the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Director Connor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We will return in seven minutes. Sado Masakis. From our recess, and as indicated, we will be moving into a work session to discuss, uh, the 2024 legislative platform. Uh, Director Leslie Chester will be leading us in that.
Yes, thank you. Uh, the legislative committee has, um, met, um, and made a proposal, um, to, um, to draft a new legislative platform for 2024. Um, and so what's in front of you is, um, our draft to present to you after we had went through it. Um, and so just a couple of things to note. We made, did make some, um, additions or changes. Um, and so we wanted to continue with the, um, priority of fully fund mandates and essential services. So we wanted to continue with the, um, the part of saying we want, uh, to reduce the cross subsidy for special education and English learner funding. Uh, but we did add, um, and recommend adding two more, which is creating a permanent state funding stream for unemployment insurance for non-licensed employees based on this new legislation. Um, the other one we wanted to add was provide additional funding to reimburse districts for implementation and training expenses related to early adoption of evidence-based reading curriculum based on the REED Act, which is something our district is already doing. Um, we also have a, um, continued priority of removing barriers so all students and families can succeed, um, with continuing the removal of a 15-day residency requirement for students enrolled in online schools, continuing, um, Medicaid eligibility as a means of direct certification for students for qualifying for educational benefits and making funding permanent to hold districts harmless for loss of compensatory aid. And then new is provide funding to increase access to school-based pre-kindergarten programs, including licensed or certified childcare. Um, and so, we wanted to add that in. Um, then we also want, um, have the priority of creating a safe school environment that supports all students. Um, continue, um, language from our previous, um, platform is increase school, safe schools funding to expand mental health supports. Um, and we also then recommend adding enhanced support for programs that address staff shortages and help increase diversity among teachers, including our Grow Your Own Grants and short call substitute teaching programs. Uh, because in this way, it'll help remove a barrier to earning a teaching license as a way to address our teaching shortages. Um, also adding in, we wanted, we recommend, uh, providing improved clarity, including clear guidelines and improved definitions related to school resource officers as physical restraints in schools as we are maybe the only district still without SROs in our buildings. Um, and so that, um, is what we present to you as, um, offerings for 2024 legislative platform.
Thank you. Well, this is a work session, so I will just open up the mic. Anybody who wants, wishes to ask questions or speak?
So, these are not necessarily in any particular order?
No, there's no prioritization.
Okay.
I appreciate that it attempts to acknowledge the significant increases in state funding from last year, last session, while also acknowledging that some of those increases don't cover the things that they're now requiring. So I think that's an important point to continue to make with our legislators. Um, I also appreciate, um, the wording of the guidelines or the, the clarification request around the school resource officers. Um, that's definitely been an issue that, um, as you alluded to, has significantly impacted our district and continues to impact our district, cause we still don't have them back in our building. So, I am hopeful that when the legislature goes back into session in February, this is something that they are able to address to the satisfaction of, of us and, and the city and other districts across the state.
This is something we can then utilize, um, when it's MSBA Day or AMSD Day on the Hill in March.
Right.
With our legislators.
Arch 18th, according to what I was told at MSBA conference today, yes.
And so to also caveat, this is also, um, when we were looking this, we, we reviewed MSBA and AMSD's legislative platforms and kind of looked at what were the common themes and stuff, and then what really fit what we want for our district.
I think this makes a lot of sense. Um, I'm sure a lot of time went into this, you know, so really appreciate the thought, the thoughtfulness. Um, you know, particularly, you know, I noticing the, um, removing the 15-day residency requirement, that's important for our virtual academy if we're going to expect that to grow, continue to grow. Um, so yeah, I think it, it does a really beautiful job of kind of encompassing, as, as Scott mentioned, you know, acknowledging those new fund, you know, the enhancements to funding and also kind of where it needs to be bolstered a little bit.
And though I was on the committee, I kinda came in and didn't do a lot of work, but I think we hit all the major points too. So, good job.
Actually, we thank Erin.
Okay, good job.
Having been there, the, the first legislative committee, when we decided to do this a number of years back, this is a miles ahead of come, come, we've come many miles.
Come a long way in five years.
From what the first iteration of this looked like.
And this is the first platform without us asking for an exemption.
I'd also be the earliest that this board has had. I mean, like you mentioned, five years ago, the committee was just starting. I don't think we had a platform that year until March or April, cause it was a brand-new committee.
We didn't even have, we.
Didn't have a committee when.
We created the idea of having a platform. That was actually one of the agenda.
Exactly. Yeah, you're right. Exactly. I was gonna, if I may, um, one other. You mentioned the AMSD and MSBA platforms. Um, other, I know we have the, the SROs and the 15-day that are, I'm, I'm sure those are probably also in the, those platforms. Are there other things that are very, um, are there other things that are maybe different that MSBA or AMSD have identified as major priorities that are less of a concern for us at this point, or things that?
I think there was, there was quite, they had longer, um.
And they tend to go into more detail.
Yeah, yeah.
But this is a good sum, good summary of what's most important to us.
Remember, they represent rural districts too. Some, well, they consider that, um, even though it's, AMSD is metropolitan, but the MSBA, they have to represent the rural districts, and they have some different legislative priorities.
Definitely.
And then the intermediate districts, they have different priorities too. And so, MSBA has quite a lengthier.
Oh, yes.
Very different from ours, so.
Okay.
I have one technical question. So, in the opening, um, on behalf of the students, it says the District 191 Legislative Committee. Would that change to the 191 Board once they adopt it?
Oh, yeah.
It's really coming from all of you.
Yeah, it should be the Board. Yeah, it'd be the Board of Directors.
So this will come in front of us for approval, I believe, in a future meeting, correct? Is that the process? Yes.
I guess it'd be the next meeting.
So that would be the only change, the legislative committee to, to Board.
Well, and Leslie also, in addition to using this in person, um, I'm thinking this might also be helpful, um, when we email legislators, right?
Oh, yeah, completely.
Just like here, this is, this is what.
Here it is.
Yep, there you go.
We've done that in the past where.
Yeah, haven't we?
It emailed it to the legislators once it's approved.
Yeah, I mean, and, if, you know, and having it on our website, this is something community members and, um, any residents in our area could do this with their legislators too, cause usually Massive Voice helps get the.
Right.
Voice heard.
I don't know, is the, does the legislative committee, do they, do they still invite legislators to attend the meetings periodically?
Yeah.
Cause I, when I was on that committee, I thought it was something we would do, even though they presumably already had it, we would give them a copy of that platform when they would go to the meeting.
Yeah, we do, but, but it's also hard on, on get their schedules to get here. And so this is why I'm always encouraging us to go to them too.
Definitely.
On our days, cause then they already know that we're coming.
Indeed. No, this is great. Thank you.
And thank my fellow committee members.
Thank you to all of you.
And Erin.
Okay. Uh, this concludes our work session. Uh, is there a motion to close the meeting under Minnesota State Stat, uh, Minnesota Statute, Section 13D dot 03, close meetings for labor negotiation strategy to discuss labor negotiations?
So moved.
Moved by Director Hume.
Second.
Seconded by Director Chester. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Hearing none, the motion carries unanimously. The meeting is now closed, and we will move to the Human Resources Conference Room.